Meeting, March 9th, 2023. Next order of business. What's that?
Speak up, Sylvia.
I was going to say, Mayor, we cannot hear you over here.
Really?
Really.
You know it's here, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I will project. Call the Lewiston City Council work session to order. It's I just spent five days with kids, so. Okay, grandkids. First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please stand and recite the pledge. But it's over here in the court.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next order of business is discussion items. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the city council to vote on that item. First up is Item A, Fire Station Update, an update on the Fire Station 4 project provided by Fire Chief Michael Bust. And Chief Michael Bust, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record and remember to speak up clearly and loudly like I'm not doing, I guess, so that folks listening at home can hear you. You have two or three microphones above head, councillors. Same for us, I guess we maybe have one on this end. But with that, Chief Michael Bust, I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Travis Michael Bust, Fire Chief. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the Station 4 project. As I was preparing for this today, I realized that this will actually be probably the very last time that I'll be in front of you making a presentation like this, based upon my retirement coming up in May. This has been a topic that I have made very, very many presentations to city council because it's been actually something that's been a project I've dealt with for nine years. Little background, this, a lot of people believe this was my vision and my idea. This actually started over 15 years ago with Chief Greg as we worked of knowing the need of that station when it was 35 years old and the need of looking of what do we do with it. Chief Gary DeYoung, who was ahead of me, started actually working and that's when we started in. When I became the interim chief, this was actually a project in motion and we've continued to move that in motion to today. So what I have in front of you today is really I'm not here to ask for a vote. That is not on place. What I'm here is to provide some information so when, in a future council meeting, when you have to make a decision on voting to approve or to not approve to move forward with Phase 2, you have the information in hand. I don't want to bring that information the night of a vote. I think that's not these. You have some very tough decisions, no matter whether you vote Option 1 to move forward or you vote Option 2 to stop and pause. There are some very significant factors that you have to think through and that's what I'm here to do is provide you an overview of that and I'm really here to answer your questions. There's a lot to this. So where we are in the project now, see if my mouse is going to work here. Aaron's got control and nothing's moving forward. There we go. So where we are is the fire station. We're in Phase 1B. We've actually completed Phase 1B with core construction. We have a 60% design on the station sitting on the lot at Fifth and Brighton. You can see in the picture, this is a view of the station. This is meeting the needs of the fire station today and looking forward 30 to 40 years from now. It's very important. You'll see this is not a Taj Mahal. This is not, we had a lot of ones that are not in the station because it's not needed and because of where the cost has been going, we're truly trying to look at what we have. But this is the view of the station basically from Brighton and then as I advance here, or Aaron, if you'll advance me to the next one. This is looking more from the corner of Fifth. So you've got the base space and then you have the living courts. So let's go into the next slide. So a little bit of updates. So like I said, we have completed Phase 1A and 1B. The station is at 60% design and we're currently at the stage where it is ready with an approval of Phase 2 to move forward with permitting and actual construction of the station. This is a progressive design build, which means we selected a contractor with an architect team and an engineering team and together, everybody decided how we designed the station, which was a very effective process. There were things where an architect wanted X, the contractors going, we cannot accomplish that due to the cost and we met in the middle. It is a very, very effective process that I'd recommend the city using for future because it does cut a lot of cost and change orders down the road because it's 60%. It's pretty well designed. There isn't a whole lot because we did this as we moved through the project. With that, it sets a guaranteed max price. The guaranteed max price of this project is set what you see on the screen. We are working with Core Construction. Actually, Jeff Jerome is online on Zoom. He's the project manager for the pre-design. He was, is here if you have questions. And I'll kind of explain a little bit why this number is where it is today versus when Phase 1A was finished and where we had anticipated it being at that 6.5, why it has escalated. A little about why it escalated is when they reached out back in April to the local contractors, there were quite a few local contractors that had given them estimates. When they actually went out for an official bid in December, we have major projects in the valley that are going. We have the courthouse that's breaking ground soon and a lot of the local contractors would not put in bids because they're like, we can't work on this. We don't have the staff. And so that forced them as the bids started coming in, instead of being local from the Tri-City, Spokane, Corleone, as far as Boise. When you do that, you have per diem, it jacks up the price. It is what it is. We have no control on that. And then now we have the jail in Sotan County coming up. A future is if Clarkson, which I certainly hope they're successful in their Bonneville High School, that's going to be a massive project that will go on for years. So these bigger projects do put competition when you're trying to do a project like this. Currently in the budget, you have 6.5 million. It's in this current fiscal year for the station. This is what the city has spent today. Just shy of a million dollars is what we spent and that is including all the things that are up there, including the property. So that's just something that I want you to know where we're at today and what we've done. Common issues we hear are the two. Location's horrible and it's expensive. Yep, location. I'm the only one in this room that was here 30 years ago when Station 2 was built. That's the last fire station the city of Lewiston's built, 30 years ago. And I will tell you, that was a horrible location if you listen to people. There were tons of council meetings and people saying, not in my neighborhood. You're always going to have that. I was just in Boise two weeks ago. I was the keynote speaker for the Idaho Fallen Firefighter Memorial and as I'm driving back, I'm coming down State Street, six lanes, and here's a big sign, coming soon, Fire Station 13, Boise Fire Department. I called up Chief Mark Niemeyer. I said, Chief Niemeyer, why did you pick that spot? Response times, you put stations on busy roadways because that's how you can get there. There's two things that we can do in the fire service to improve, how we put out fires quickly and how we administer emergency care. That is how fast we can process the dispatch call and get the firefighters alerted, how fast we turn out and then the time it takes and closeness of it. So drive times. This station is put in an area to improve that. I will say, did I pick the spot? No. We've hired, we've done studies that determined a location in the vicinity. This was the property. It is what we have, but it does improve response time. That's the next bullet. You build fire stations for two reasons. You build them to improve response times and you build them to improve the needs of our firefighters to bring us up. That's what this station has done. That is where we're at today. Aaron, next slide. So here's what I want to give you. Option 1 is approval. There are some things you have to consider with Option 1. Number 1, there's a $1.4 million shortfall. Amy is here, if you have questions. Can the city, because we're cash flowing that, is that an option? This project, because it will not be completed until December of 2024, does carry you into additional fiscal years. That is something that you could look at. And so with questions with the money, I'm going to leave that up to Amy to answer because that's not my world. The other thing is the city is going to have to hire a qualified owner's rep. We have that on the water treatment facility. But because of my retirement, I was going to be the owner agent processing this project, but due to the delays of this and my opportunity to retire, I will not be here. I will not be here to see the first piece of dirt moved. And so that's something that the city is going to have to consider. You're going to, to move to Phase 2, you're going to have to approve a contract plan amendment. That is not in front of you. We don't even have that document yet. So Core provided the Phase 2 plan. By contract, we have 30 days to review it and provide our comments and response. The city attorney and I and the team have done that. Last Friday, we submitted a three-page document with questions and comments that they need to answer. Under the contract, from the date they delivered the Phase 2 plan, the city has 90 days to respond. That is May 4. So you're not going to have an action to take a vote tomorrow or next week. It will probably be sometime in April before you're going to take a vote on this Phase 2. And once again, you can vote to move forward with it or you can vote to stop it. That's really the two options you're going to have in front of you. So the timeline is up on the board. It's very easy. The dirt work would be somewhere between September, October. I anticipate if we go out to the full end of the 90 days after talking with Core, you're probably not going to be turning dirt until October, November, just reality. Other things is that means completion won't be till probably December of '24 or January of '25. That's the timeline we're looking for. So next slide, Aaron. Some things about, this is some pros and cons to just think about. A pro of it is you're not going to have to spend any more money doing some of the upgrades that was presented to you on Monday. Plus, there's some other needs that would need to be addressed if you decided not to move forward that the city's going to have to take a hard look at. The other is the city will no longer pay to the Joint Airport Authority the $7,000 a year lease. That's currently what we've been paying since 2019. We will, a pro is improve response times. We did a GIS element. There were over 500 calls that we responded to last year that we would have improved our response times to that call by greater than a minute. 500 of our citizens would have gotten a fire engine or an ambulance one minute faster. I will tell you, fires of today, a minute makes a big difference. I will tell you, if you're not breathing, your heart is not beating or you're short of breath, a minute makes a big difference. The other thing is a pros is you are going to improve the live, the living conditions and the lives of your firefighters. We're going to reduce the risk of what's called a presumptive illness. The city of Lewiston now has the first ever presumptive illness with one of our active firefighters who now is battling cancer, who got it on the job. He worked 15 years in this station. That is going to be a financial hit over time to the city because the city will take care of that individual till the day he dies. It's a presumptive illness. You take another one of those, that's going to be an expensive hit. Probably a hit that the city will no longer be able to be self-insured is a work comp. That's just something we have to think of. I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about, I was a fire chief at the helm when one of our firefighters got cancer and is fighting for his life today. They're traveling to climb, the stair climb, as a bunch of our firefighters are going to climb over 60-some flights in his honor this weekend, raising money to reduce blood cancer. That's how much it means to us. There are cons to that. There are cons to both sides of this and that's why I'm not making the decision for you. My job is to provide you facts and as a city council, you're going to have to make the tough choice and it is extremely tough. You're going to have to find additional money. That's definitely a con in our city today. There's no doubt about it. You're going to have to hire that owner rep and then you're going to have to live with not everyone liking the location. But even if you scrap this and find a new location sometime down the road, somebody's not going to like it. It's just the way it works. Next slide. So Option 2 is you deny. You did not vote to move forward with Phase 2. That stops the project. It terminates a contract with Core Construction and basically everything you've spent is done. You're not going to get it back. You can't take this design. The design belongs to them. You can take the concept or you can go into contract with the architect that designed this. The problem is they designed this building and engineered it for the lot it's on. The concept will work, but you're probably looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars to finish a design if you took this and put it somewhere else. Something we'll just have to think of. If you sell the lot, you're going to get some money more than what you paid for it, but due to find an acre still within a zone, because if you move out of that zone for response times, you're now going to impact our next survey and rating, which comes in less than four years. Surveying is done every seven years by the Idaho Survey and Rating Bureau and they look at all things that the fire department does, from dispatch, water, response, staffing, and they give us a rating. Currently, we're in ISO 3. If we were to bump, you mess with the response times, you mess with our ability to respond adequately, you take us to a 4, I called my insurance company for my home, my homeowner's insurance will go up $150 a year, every year. Every single home in Lewiston will face that and every business will face it. So that's something we have to think of is think of the zone. If you scrap it, make sure you find a station that's in the zone so you don't impact those response times. You know, we're going to continue to pay. It's in the budget. It's going to escalate a little bit each year, but that is there. That's just something that you're going to, that is just a factor there. The contract that the city has with the airport for the lease of that land, one, you're going to have to renew it because it was drafted with the intent of the station being built and moving out before 2024. The other thing is that contract states that any modification, internal, external of the station must have approval from the airport. So I'm just telling you, if you decide to not and you're going to do some work, please make sure that you have that conversation with the joint authority now, prior to doing the work and then violate in a contract. We did a study that was published in May of 2020. You've all seen it probably multiple times. That study has labeled out for the next 12-plus years, you have $28 million in infrastructure for the fire stations. Between replacing Station 4, which they said that is your number one priority, renovation of Station 2, next priority, purchasing land, which the study said you should be doing in the next four years, and then building Station 1, which by the way, Station 1 has to go that way because it's got to improve response times that way. You don't do it, that will have an impact on your next survey and rating assessment also. With inflation of 5%, you're looking at almost $50,000. I got to tell you, that is a massive number when you look at that. Massive number that, that not just this council, but future councils, but that's something that we know is a need. Once again, the last capital infrastructure in the fire department for a building was 30 years ago now. Station 2 at 16th and Grill is the newest station we have and it needs some renovation as you were given in the presentation on Monday. There's some things that need to be done. Go with the next slide. So things to consider. These are a few things that I've sat with my team and we've looked and talked about, okay, if you don't, what needs to be looked at? What has to be addressed? Number 1, there is a massive Title IX issue related at Station 4. There's one bathroom. It's shared by everyone. There's one shower in there. And what do you do if you have a female? Currently, today, it's not a problem. But we have female applicants in the wind. That is a station where we will work that firefighter. Do you want your daughter or your spouse to work in a station where they have no place to go to the bathroom without someone coming in where they can shower? That is something the city has to be ready for. And if you don't, that needs to be addressed. Fire department continuing of operations. We have the training room designed and built at the new station so that if we had a situation, we had a chlorine release from a rail car, we had the propane tank behind Han Supply that we had and we had to evacuate, we could move our fire department operations for administration to that facility and continue operating as a city. Without that, that is something down the road council and next fire chief are going to have to think of because it's reality. We look at what happened in East Palestine. Accidents occur. It's always been my fear. Right now, our plan is grab our bags, grab our laptops and find a spot. But we had this set up to where we could physically operate and manage the city from a 911 emergency response element and that's just something that was built into it. So we don't have that capability today. Cleaning our personal protective equipment uniforms. I got to tell you, you better be on it. Answer. It's, it's, so I was the keynote at the Fallen Firefighter Memorial two weeks ago. We put two names on the wall, two Idaho firefighters. You know what their cause of death was? Both of them, cancer. We're not putting people's name on the walls anymore for being trapped, caught in a flashover. We're putting names on the wall because they take their life with a gun. They commit suicide. That was two years ago's name. Or they get cancer. And we're facing that now with one of our own brothers having cancer. That's a reality. You've got to figure it out. Station 4 was a leapfrog to doing many other things at other stations because it allowed space and opportunity for us to do some things. If not, it puts us back. ADA issues at Station 4 is a key. Here's one other thing, it's not in this slide. I talked to the fire marshal. Any additional square footage to the current fire station will trigger, the full building has to be sprinkled. Existing and every other part. That building was not plumbed in design for it, so it's going to be quite a process. When Valerie talked about all those things like the plumbing and electrical, those do need to be, you won't be able to occupy the fire station during the time of those activities. I don't know what you're going to do because you just don't shut down a fire station or you just don't put fire engines out under a tent. That's going to be something, thinking if that's the route you go, that's the planning. That's why I say you're going to have to hire an architect and a construction company to manage these decisions moving forward because there's so many things that are out there. You're going to be in this station. If you don't move forward, you're going to, a minimum, three to six years. It could be longer. I mean, I would have never thought in my mind nine years ago that I would be in front, two months prior to my retirement, still talking about a fire station. I have chiefs that have not only built fire stations in this timeframe, they've built fire stations and have retired from the fire service and we're still trying. That's just reality. So that's something I think 6, maybe longer. We have HIPAA issues. HIPAA issues are protective health. The crews have to write reports. They do that in the area they share with everything. You've all been there. They share with everybody else. That needs to stop. Really what I need to do is, and if we're not going to see a new station, I will take action and we will limit public access into that living space because we can't take a risk of a HIPAA violation. If someone, if they leave a report up and the public comes through and they see that report, the city is liable. I, as your fire chief, am not going to take that. I'm not going to take that risk. We have a bedroom without a window. It needs to be addressed. Valerie talked about it's a cinder block building. You're going to have to engineer. What was it, 15,000 just to design it? So that's something we have to. I've already talked about the plumbing, the mental health issues. Here's the thing, you've all been there. And it's easy to say, huh, they're fine. There's plenty of room. There is no place for them to go to spend time on their own. Oh yeah, have some time on your own. Go to that bedroom that doesn't have a window after you saw someone shoot their brains out or you did CPR and had to tell someone that their family member didn't live and you need time to decompress and you tell them to go to a bedroom that has no window or you tell them to be in an environment where they can't go work out and release those toxins, they have nothing to go for. That is not effective. And I'm telling you, two years ago, we put a name on the wall in Boise for a Boise firefighter that not only committed suicide, he did it in the bay of a fire station. He hung himself off of the ladder of a truck. I do never want to see anything like that happen to our firefighters. We have to look out for them. So whatever you do, look for the mental health of our firefighters. That and cancer are going to be the two things that kill your firefighters in this environment today. I'm sorry, I'm passionate about this, but I got to tell you, I buried a firefighter six months after being a chief for a non-fire department-related accident and it is still the worst thing I've lived through next to now having a firefighter that got cancer under my watch. You guys can walk away from it. I'll live with that for the rest of my life. That will be a demon in my closet that I will live with for the rest of my life. So I am passionate about it. The other thing where I have to do is if you move forward or don't, how are we going to fund this? Right now, it's cash flow. It could be a bond and that's going to be tough in our environment. We know how hard it was to get a high school. Clarkson's on attempt number four or five. I certainly hope that they're successful on April 25th, but it's tough. And it's going to be even tougher now because our property taxes, I'm a property taxpayer. I know how much I paid in property taxes. It's hard. I get it. That's why I say I don't want to be in your shoes to make the decision. Next slide. So the things here that you have to is just, these are the facts that I know of in front of you that you're going to have to face. I don't have all the answers, but what I have is my job is to put things in front versus one option or the other. There is no perfect option. I can tell you that. No matter what you do, somebody's not going to like it. I get it. No matter what you do, whether it's today, in May, or in five years from now, we're going to pay for it. It's reality. The station started, I went back and in the 2018 budget, I put a request for $3 million. We've watched this one escalate. I asked Core Construction, what does it look like for the future? They said material may come down some, but here's what won't, cost. Your wages and benefits is going to continue. That's not going down. And so it'll continue to be a challenge. So I'm here to stand for questions you have. We have Core. We have Amy related to finance. I've got Valerie here related to facility stuff. I'm glad that we're able to follow. She gave a very great presentation of the needs of not just the fire department, but all of our facilities. You have tough decisions ahead and I totally respect that. And I'm not here to tell you to vote one way or the other. I'm just here to give you the information that I know of today and to answer questions you have today.
Thank you, Chief. Councillors, if we can, if we can just be informal, if we just kind of take turns asking questions, discussing that way we don't have to go through the chair and slow the process down. Councillor Spickelmeier.
Thank you. So Chief, if this has a projected date of 2024 and our Brighton road construction isn't even seeing light until 2025, probably.
Yes.
Could it actually function without having the road construction?
Yeah, because what we'll actually do is we're going to do all the road frontage improvements on Brighton and Fifth during the construction phase. We've worked with Public Works. We've worked with their engineering firm. The only thing that won't change until that road is done is where the light sits itself. There'll be what they call a bulb out, but the lanes of traffic will be there. Actually, it will operate very well for that and then we'll have the traffic control mechanism that will stop traffic to allow us to exit during an emergency situation. So it's designed to flow for now and then move forward. There won't have to be. One part I liked is there won't be major work directly in front of the fire station when the Brighton project starts because that road work will have already been done during this project.
Is that inclusive in this price that you have?
It is. Yes, it is. Yep. What that price is, all the electrical elements, the pavement and street work, all the curbing. I mean, I think on Brighton, we lost 20. I used to be able to rattle off, I think it's 26 feet I think it's 26 feet and on Fifth Street, we lost 17 feet to be able to put the additional lanes because there'll be five lanes of traffic in front of this new station. So that's, and that's to be designed with the design that the city and their engineering firm is working on. But we've been in lots of conversation with Dustin and his staff during this to make sure you don't have to go back and redo anything at all. No, great question.
And this is getting back to traffic control. That's including, I can't remember the term, but it was like a blackout light or?
Yeah, yeah. It's got a traffic arm and a blackout light that will queue and clean out the traffic that would be in front. So, you know, we've all been there at five o'clock. Yes, five o'clock is tough. Here's the thing, you guys don't have to drive through that intersection at five o'clock like our firefighters do today in a very improper controlled intersection. This will be properly controlled. It actually will be safer for firefighters maneuvering there than it is today in honesty, because right now we rely on an Opticom, but this will have that traffic. Now, there will be a public education campaign that will need to, as the fire station is getting completed, to educate our public how it works. These are everywhere that you go. If you go to the Tri-Cities, you go to Boise, you go to Marin, you go to Nampa, these traffic control devices are on because they're putting fire stations on busy roadways because it improves response time. I mean, we still, even though we have red lights and sirens, can only travel 10 miles an hour of the speed limit, period. That's all. And I don't want them going a whole lot more over that. But you go from a 25 mile an hour road on Burrell to a 35 mile an hour road on Bryden with currently the width with, when it's done, it's going to be wider. It's far safer and it's far faster travels.
Travis. I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to try to. The first one, and again, I appreciate your passion, but I think reading through the study again and then listening to Valerie's presentation, when we talk about the protection of our firefighters, and I guess one of my biggest concerns is why we're limiting that protection to just Station four at this time because when you read through the report from 2020, it addresses cross-contamination in all stations. And so I, when we talk about protecting, I hate to be reactionary. And I know the firemen that you speak of, and I think that we need to protect all of them, not just Station four. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out what the solution is. To be honest, I feel like we've been put in a position that you've made it very good and clear, that we have very hard decision. And this has been going on for a long time. I remember being in high school and learning about that we needed new buildings in Lewiston. And I remember when we consolidated libraries and then bought one of the oldest buildings in town to renovate. And we now currently have maintenance needs. There's a lot of things that I'm frustrated with. And so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how do we move forward? Because when you say we want to protect our firemen, I want to protect them all.
So do I.
So when you get emotional about that, I equally get emotional because I think about, do they get luck of the straws that gets to sleep in a clear, clean air filtration? And while Stations one and two don't, I mean, none of them are ADA compliant. If we wanted to talk about my daytime job, that really ticks me off. I mean, these are things that I'm trying to figure out, like how do we move forward? When you say this isn't the Taj Mahal, it certainly is in comparison to Station number one and number two. And the study also, there's a couple of things that maybe, and I know that's a lot, but I'm going to just add these other two because I think they play together. The study, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the study I read that we bought the land before the study was done.
Correct.
And so the study basically said, yes, it is, but the general vicinity of Fourth Street in Bryden is the area. So in my mind, the vicinity of that is still in the zone.
Yep.
Correct? And then on that, it's three plus years old when they started the study, is the city's growth as predicted?
Because I, actually, it's a little less than what was predicted then. And the big part of the predictive growth for that study was especially, we were very concerned. It wasn't about Station four. We had worked with other contractors to establish, is, before we bought the property, is this the right location? We use that to codify it. The other part we used is, do we need to add a fourth station out in the East Orchards or is it based on growth better to renovate the current Station four? And that was their decision because if not, you would have had to add additional fire engines and additional. You would have added nine, a minimum of nine firefighters. That, you're looking at a lot of money. Yes, your concerns, if I had the magic wand and you could give me what I want, I want the 28 million. I want every fire station up to snuff and I want a training facility because we are the only city of our size, we used to be one of two, that didn't have a training facility. And Twin Falls got it right and they just opened their new training facility a month ago. So we don't have that. If you want my opinion, give me 28 million and let's do everything right. But Station two is the newest station. It was built with more ADA compliant and Station one was remodeled 18 years ago to address some of those needs. They both are not the best, but they are safer than anything at Station four is. And that's why you pick one. If you were to ask me, give me 28 million, let's get them all done. You'd never hear from me again. I'd hop skip out here with a happy smile on my face, no doubt. That's what I would love to see, but we know that is not going to be affordable.
Right. And I guess my question is, is it a reality if we fix some of the other deferred maintenance within the city that allows for some tax-based growth that we look at, a training center and those kind of things? So, and again, I'm a little confused as to the 6.5 million. I've asked some questions. I believe it's clear where that money is, but maybe we could talk about that because I really don't remember putting it specifically to the fire station. That number gets thrown a lot around a particular fund that includes community park and then also just a generalized capital. And so am I wrong or?
I'll let the money first talk to that.
Is this an actual dedicated fire fund?
Amy Gordon, City Treasurer. When we originally created what we call the Assigned Building Fund and started contributing funds into that account to save for future capital needs, it was created to fund the Fire Station four, Community Park, and other capital needs of the city. In the fiscal year 23 budget, we have a six and a half million line item specific to Fire Station four.
Thank you.
So I have a few things. I use my elementary school teacher math and I came up with, right now, we've spent about 12 and a half percent of the total cost at a little under a million dollars to get it up to 7.8, almost 7.9 million dollars.
A million dollars on top of that. So overall project, you would be adding the million to that 7.8.
So the 7.8 is what we, that's additional.
That's to build the station. Yep. That's correct.
Okay, that drops that then. The airport owns the land. We own the building. Okay? What happens to the building?
That'll be a question that council will have to decide what you want to do with it.
Sure.
But yeah, that will be a council decision.
And I was wondering what exactly, I mean, if we were to redo that building, how could a fire station actually function during that whole thing?
It will be a challenge. Because here's the other part of renovating that station is you still have apparatus that sits outside. You also have a battalion chief position that was created. Let's see, when did I get promoted to battalion chief? Well, 20 years ago. And that position operates. I will tell you, if I was still your fire chief and you didn't build this station, I would look at repurposing those positions as staff positions, have a duty chief because they're not able to respond to the calls effectively because they can't respond to the East Orchards in the bottom corner. That would be something I would sit with my team and I'd have a long, hard conversation about, but that won't be my decision. But that is a concern to move the BC up. But we do still have apparatus sitting outside. We have apparatus to replace that will get wider and those doors, that's something that Valerie and I never talked about. Those doors are narrow now. That is the one station that we have ripped off doors. That's why we don't put up prop doors anymore. We do rollups. But that'll be something to be a concern is if you do continue and just, you know, whatever you add to meet the needs of the station, that's something that, that base space, we need the additional base for apparatus. Apparatus, if you go up there, it's very tight. So I would say if you're going to spread the money and do some deferred and not replace, don't overlook that because that's something that, if it's predictable, it's preventable. That's one I can tell you, you're going to have issues with down the road. That's why when the new crash truck for the airport was built, why they just didn't put it in that and they had to build a new building. It physically can't fit. Next fire engines, you might, that's something you're going to have to have a concern in. So definitely don't let that go away.
I remember that, Chief. We looked at a spot up there on the airport, up at Fifth and Cedar, I believe. And that became cost prohibitive. But no, that new ARF truck, there's no way it was going to get parked inside the old one. I don't know if the old one's still in there or not.
No, the old one is over at the AOB, so.
New building. So, you know, consequently, the airport, J. Abe have built a new building to accommodate, you know, their vehicles. So, I don't know. How many people have been through Station four on a physical tour? I mean, to me, it's unsuitable.
I guess.
Cost of construction or reconstruct, I'm sorry to cut you off, but the cost of reconstruction, you know, I deal with that trade every day. It's my job. Rebuild that building on that site, I think you'd be looking at every bit as much money and you'd still be paying at least to the Joint Airport Authority, at least that much, if not.
Well, it's based on square footage, so you would pay more because there's, they have to maintain their grant assurances. And so whatever your footprint, I did go and take on a GIS map and I'll actually email it to all of you tomorrow when I get back to my office. But I took the current, what the acre we need and laid it two different directions on the current site for Station four. And one is you're not able to, you're going to have to acquire the structure next to the station and you cut off all access to the tower and the airport stuff. It can be maneuverable, but that's something you'll have to think of there if you look. I mean, believe me, I've seen so many options and I brainstormed. I went as far as to lease. I mean, I had legal, Kayla and I spent a lot of hours working with a developer to try. I mean, when you say I've tried whatever availability, here's one thing that no one's talking about in all these conversations though. Our citizens deserve quicker response times. Remodeling the station does not address that. I'm going to be a citizen and that concerns me because fires burn faster and hotter and we all know that as soon as you stop breathing, how many minutes you have before brain damage starts to occur. That's not being talked. So, I mean, that's something that has to be thought of. 500 of our citizens could have had a better response time.
So Chief, in response to that concern, one of the notes I wrote while you were talking earlier was that the traffic control improvements, could we put in something like what we are planning if we move forward with option one right now and have that improve response time because you would have better control of the?
I don't know. We've not looked at that because you would have to control, depending on your elements. So I don't know what that would look like because we're trying, that, you would have to clear the whole intersection in all four directions. And so it's something that we could look at. I just don't know. I'm not, I mean, believe me, there are engineers that designed this thing. They're far smarter than I am. But yeah, it's something we could look at. It definitely is worthy of a look.
And so for my next series of questions, no matter what, here's the things that I keep hearing that I'm trying to figure out how the city is addressing. When we talk about a HIPAA violation, we're talking about if you are found to violate HIPAA, that's quarter of a million dollars if substantiated in a fine. I know because I've went against the federal government due to a home health recipient throwing away their garbage and my business's name happened to be on it. Thankfully, I did not have to pay that fine. However, what are we doing right now to prevent that? And so whether we move forward or not, these things, I feel like there's some very immediate things. Like if response time is an issue, why aren't we addressing that? If we have 6.5 million dollars right now, we have reserves, we have those things. If these are dire issues, why aren't we coming to the table and figuring out how to address these things right now? Or I don't mean to pick on people, but nine years ago.
Council President, to improve response times, you got to move the building. The intersection, it is, if you physically go up and drive it today, pull your car up in front of Station four, hit a stopwatch, drive the signal to the stop sign, stop it while you stop. Start again. From there to the intersection is 60 seconds every single time. That's one minute. There is the easiest way. So the way you improve response times is you physically move the building. Changing the intersection is not going to change it. It's physicality of moving that. And here's the deal, rarely do you have an opportunity to move a fire station that doesn't negatively impact a response. We're bordered with an airport that we don't respond the ARF out of and they don't have a bunch of people that are sick every day there. That's the difference to it. And it's the county on the backside of that. It is very few times that you'll ever have that ability to move it. And that's one of the things. So that is, I wish we could be able to. We removed the station alerting out of this price tag because it was $200,000. And I, to me, me personally, I feel it's a need, but really it's a want. But that would have allowed us, as soon as the 911 phone call comes in, it would alert the stations immediately and that would shorten our time to get out the door. With that backbone being put in, it's in the strategic plan that you guys have seen and you'll see it again soon. It states that this then triggers the retrofitting because you don't have to buy the backbone of putting that station alerting in Station two and Station four. So once again, this has been a strategic plan of, this then improves the next step to the next station, to the next station, to the next station. But never in my wildest dreams did I figure nine years later, I'd still be here and there's not an ounce of dirt turn. And so, yeah, Council, I'm with you. It is hard because I want to give everyone. So what have we done? We put exhaust extractors in every fire station. Every firefighter now has two sets of turnouts. Eight years ago, didn't exist. We're doing our best to reduce what we have control on and do it within our budget. But those are some things. Like I said, the idea was to move forward. If not, that's what I hope, Council, is if you don't move forward, that collectively, and it won't be me. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be the brains sitting here. I'm obviously not the brains now. It wouldn't have taken me nine years to get here. But truly, that's got to be the thought of, okay, what are we going to do collectively to balance this out? And that's, those are the challenges. That's why I bring, I am bringing solutions for some of these because I don't have the answers and there's triggers of, does this building code trigger this and what triggers that? I teach building construction at the college right now and I'm telling you what, the foundation has to be built because I had firefighters say, Chief, just put a second story on that and you're golden. The foundation was not built for a second story. It's a concrete slab. The building wasn't designed 50 years ago to do some of those things. So that's why you're going to have to bring in some engineers and contractors to do something if you decide to just fix and spread the wealth across all the stations.
So Chief, talking about response time, I'm trying to remember back when you had explained some of this to me before, when I did my first tour. But did by moving that Station four, did you say that it would improve the response time to the tree streets over by North Forty?
Yes.
That's now covered by Station two?
That is correct. Yep. Yeah. So it does improve the response times to that. That is our highest call volume area in our city and it has the worst response times according to national standards. Also, it greatly improves the response to the Valley Vista and the Elks area because once again, you're moving that station, you're taking that minute to go from the current station to Fifth and Bryden. You're eliminating that. We've gone out, I've timed it to look from the current Station two that responds to Tree Streets is exactly within a second of the current fire station location. So switching those around, the only reason we would do that is if we have to balance run volume. So if Station two gets too busy, which is starting to happen, that's why we did an analysis on that to look, should we be able to modify that? But that is, yeah, that's the area, excuse me, that we see. It's definitely, we have a lot of patients in there and they have a lot of problems. And that's just something, I mean, I'll be transparent. I live up there. I know how many times I see fire engines and ambulances in my neighborhood, sometimes in my neighbor's. So I know the number of calls that are there. I've actually, hate to admit this, but I had to call 911 a year ago in November because of a natural gas line that ruptured. And I got to tell you, that was the longest, six to eight minutes of my life. While I had a natural gas line pumping out, three-quarter inch line, high pressure. And I'm the fire chief and I had, it felt like forever. That's why I know when I get phone calls, Chief, it took forever. You're, oh, it really didn't, but it does seem like forever. But that was a long time waiting. really didn't, but it does seem like forever. But that was a long time waiting. So I've, I've experienced the wait. I'm, I'm one of the customers now and I, it does, it was a while.
You know that we've had some costs that Valerie had talked about if we were to go through and try to do stuff with Fire Station Four, but there wasn't any mention, I don't think, of a sprinkler system. Some sense about how much that would add on to that tag? They're not cheap, I know that.
Yeah, and you'll probably have to bring in some new plumbing because the plumbing you would need will have to be a secondary for sprinklers. So there's, there's work, but I don't know, depends how mu, how big of the billing you're adding, but you're probably, I'm guessing for some of the businesses we've had, because that's a concern that they give me is now I have to install it, you're probably sixty-five thousand dollars would be my guess.
Changed ownership?
Oh, yes.
Was it the hideaway?
Yeah.
Mayor, have we checked with Cassie for anything?
Councilor Forstman, do you have a question?
Can you hear me this time? Are you able to hear me?
I can hear you, Councilor.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Yesterday, I kind of, or a couple of days ago, I sounded like a robot. I, I didn't, I know Gary Peterson had talked about that one lot and I'm just trying to remember kind of the pros and cons if, if we were able to use that instead of the, the other news property that hasn't been built on.
I've not looked at all of those. One of the things, you're going to have to start from scratch, new traffic analysis, because we did for where we were. You're going to have to design a station for that. Look at those things. And my guess is you'll probably have to do some type of traffic maneuver at Fourth and, and Brighton, just because of proximity. But I have not looked at that. I couldn't tell you what that will be. And Councilor, I'm going to be straight up honest. I'm not going to look at it prior to my retirement. I'm just going to be honest.
I understand that. Do, and maybe you already answered this and I, and I didn't catch that, but do, would the response time still be improved if we did possibly look into that location?
It would definitely improve because you're getting that shorter. You're going to have a little bit more time. So you're going to, this would be probably what, what Council President had said about what are we going to do at Fifth and Brighton? Because that's where those runs would be going because of the tree streets. So it, it would definitely, it, it's going to improve response times. We've, it's in the zone and that's what you want. Whether it's ten seconds here, thirty seconds, you start looking at it. It's in the zone. And, and so that is an option. The only thing that I'd say is you're going to build a fire station on property you never owned. And so you're going to have a lease payment. What, I did it at the current property value for the acre and it's sixteen thousand dollars a year that you'll pay. So that's just something that, that's there. But it is definitely an option.
Thanks for answering those questions for me as best you can. Yeah, I'm definitely, it is a struggle, especially after finding out all the maintenance on all of our buildings within the city. And so it's, you know, we're definitely handed a, a very difficult decision, no matter which way we go about this. So I appreciate the time that you put into this and presenting it to us for the millionth time, I'm sure, as well as under Councils. So I appreciate that.
And if we decide to do that, then I guess we chuck nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars down the drain because it'd have to be a whole new insurance side. You know, granted, we could pick up some money by selling that piece of property. Sorry. Excuse me, I had the floor.
I thought you were finished. Excuse me.
No, I was just making a very valid comment. We've had a lot of time emphasizing time and money invested into this project. I firmly believe that the traffic control plan is very viable. We've already been run through simulations on how it's going to be handled. And yeah, it is a busy intersection. But, you know, when you think down the road, instead of next week or next month, like some people seem to look at things, really in twenty, twenty-five years down the road, what's Brighton, what's Brighton going to look like? Certainly different than it is today. And this is a viable project in the location we've chosen. I'm done.
Well, I guess in response to that, that we've invested a lot of money, I would agree. In fact, I think we lost out, I read an article today from the newspaper that said, the mayor at the time said that we couldn't afford a four point one million dollar price tag for the airport plan that was in motion. And now we're double that eight years later and looking at another two years before we complete. And so long-term planning is something that I truly look at. And when I'm getting phone calls and emails of our elder population especially, but not just them, but that's who I've grown to show respect and feel that they are the people I should be making decisions for. They're going to be gone in a year because of property taxes. And so when I look at what we invest in one building, is that right for them? I, I, I don't take any of this lightly. I'm not trying to be contrare in the sense of being contrare. I don't care what my husband tells you. I am actually saying these things because I'm trying to get to the right answer. But I have concerns. I, I would, I agree with you. I'd give you twenty-eight million dollars today because I believe that first responders and law enforcement need our utmost respect. I, I, but we have to take care of the mess that we've been handed. And I think Valerie's presentation says we've been handed a mess. We've tried to be the savior and take on buildings that are of no use and probably of risk to us. There's a lot of things that when I go home, again, I get it, you carry that with you. And when you're the caretaker of a group of people, you don't sleep well at night. This should be making us rethink. When we can't afford four million, but now all of a sudden, we're going to be putting out eight million. And we have people basically saying, I can't afford my house payment anymore. Our tax base is going to go down and we are not growing at all. Over the last fifteen years, we have not grown, but our government has and our, our way of spending money has. I mean, take it for what it is. That's my opinion. But I think if you look back and you start reading through our history, I, I, I think it's pretty factual and we need to be very certain that this is the right thing to do with this money because a lot of people need for this. Not just my money. It's not just yours. It's theirs. And I think that the first thing I need to, is to hear from the public of, have they paid attention to what was presented this week and what are their thoughts? Because we don't build our tax base. We're not going to be able to afford anything a month from now or the long term.
Chief, I want to go just a little bit different direction and ask you a question, but I, I do want to maybe just offer a couple of observations. And maybe you can respond, not today necessarily, but when we talk about seven point nine million dollars for a new station, less the alerting system, I think it might also be helpful for Council to see. So if we compare the seven point nine to the six point five, it's almost not apples to apples because you've taken some services out of that, you know? So if we were to leave that in there, it would be eight point one.
It's two hundred thousand dollars.
So we're looking at the same package over time, you know, like it cost us four, now eight, now twelve, instead of pulling some of these things out. And I know that's not intentional, but just so we can think about in constant dollars, you know? And then we can always add ornaments or take ornaments off. And then a quick question on the fees that, you know, maybe the city would pay to the airport. Well, first of all, the city has co-owned that airport, so we're paying ourselves there. But secondly, you know, how I look at this decision too, is that if we own a piece of property and we remove that from the tax base, that's also a cost. And, and those costs are foregone. You can't exclude those costs and say, well, it's, it's free because we take that revenue stream out of the future. So that, for me, when I look at this project, that's also a cost of the fire station versus say, if you put it on the airport. So I don't think it's fair just to say, well, if we put it on the airport, we're going to pay this perpetual lease to the airport. You know, if you subtract out that fee from the taxes, you actually save money, you know, in the long run. And, and that's just what the numbers show. So it's just, you know, make a decision off it. But my question to you, because this came up recently, we had some visitors in town and one of them had made a comment to me. And when I asked the question, you know what I'm talking about. But asked the question about modular construction. And so just, you know, for my benefit, is that something that is used in, you know, the fire industry where you could do like a modular construction fire station? And why would you do that? Well, maybe it's, you know, there's some cost savings or some flexibility or something like that, but.
Mayor, you're in luck. Jeff Jerome from Core Construction is on here. He's part of the design team. We actually discussed this. And Jeff, if you could answer the mayor's question, I think that would help a ton.
Absolutely. There have been quite a few attempts in order to use modular construction over the course of the, especially the past three years. You know, example, three years ago, we could build a fire station roughly six hundred dollars a square foot. Boise just recently had a fire station that came in estimated at roughly a thousand dollars a square foot. Cost of materials continue to go up, but a fire station is a very specialized type of facility. And it requires very special mechanical equipment in order to keep the firefighters safe and healthy. We have what we refer to as hot zones and, and warm zones and cool zones that all need to have the separation in order to mitigate transference of carcinogens to keep the firefighters healthy. There's a, a great deal of equipment that goes into keeping the air quality clean and keeping the firefighters' risk at bay. Once you start getting into modulators, you, and you put in a facility that has to house an apparatus that takes a fourteen foot by fourteen foot door, then you lose a lot of the efficiencies. And by doing that, there has been some successes in small stations where they had maybe a single app bay or a double app bay with a very modular sleeping component. But once you start adding in twenty-four, seven occupation by full-time firefighters versus the, excuse me, part-time volunteer firefighters, then you start getting in those more specialized facilities and you lose that. Sorry, I apologize, but, but you lose the economy of scale by the repetition of, of having something that's very small and very concise and very easy to construct. We actually looked at this project very early on by using a pre-manufactured building package. And we were able to price that out with local subcontractors and identify that compared to the design that we have now. And it actually came in at roughly a million dollars over what the current budget target was. And so we actually just had to scrap that idea just to go for a more conventional construction because it was more cost-effective. And time and time, we go through these option studies just to determine what those are. And it continues to, to present itself that the modulators are not as efficient because of the specialized nature of the facilities in order to protect the firefighters.
Well, thank you. If I could follow up with that. So if we were to look at, we as a city, look at our organizational structure and how we staff these shifts. And do you see in your profession, when you go around designing fire stations, does it make a difference whether they're working eight-hour shifts, twelve-hour shifts, twenty-four-hour shifts in the design of a fire station?
Well, it's, it makes a difference if you're looking at a volunteer station versus a full-time firefighter station. Whether you have an eight-hour shift or a four days on, three days off, or, you know, a three days on, four days off, it's, you still have occupation twenty-four, seven. That's their, these gentlemen's home. They, they're living there those four days a week. And you have to be able to provide them with a, a working and sleeping environment for them in order to function when they have such a, a broken sleep cycle, they have a, a broken living cycle. And it's, it's a very hard life for them to achieve. So that's one of the reasons why you see trends across the nation in facilities of going to more individual dorm rooms, providing sound insulation between them, providing, separating those sleeping quarters from the living quarters, separating it from the emergency response areas so that they can get fully rested, so they can go in and get some respite from those mental health issues that they have. You know, just by being able to provide a healthy environment for the firefighters, just so they can deal with their daily stresses, it kind of dictates the fact that you need to provide a more specialized space in the configuration of the station itself.
Thank you. Yes, both our men and our women. So Chief Michaelbus said that could happen too. So anyway, thank you.
Chief Michaelbus, um, could you, do you remember just off the top of your head, how the, the open house, how that went? When, when we, we sent that out to the public, this was something we were going to be doing. I think Core was there. You had a lot of drawings. We wanted people to see what that, what that site looked like. Do you remember the numbers of people who showed up?
My memory serves me, there's less than thirteen people that showed up.
Less than thirteen people? So I, I guess I would offer that, and I've gone to every, about every open house that the city has had. They're always underwhelming to me in the turnouts. And that doesn't mean that people don't care, but, but I take that, you know, the squeaky wheels don't necessarily get the grease. And people who are complaining about this and the costs and everything else, they're going to be loud, they're going to be passionate about it. And the reality is, is that I wish the city had done this ten years ago, had done it on your watch at the beginning, or initially when it had started for this. And it's not going to get any better if it's not done. And thirteen people to, to come to us, something like that, which was publicized, it was, it seemed pretty important. Not sure that it's as important as the passionate few seem to think it is as far as in opposition. So.
Well, I guess we don't have to do that. Were you through, Rick? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm through. Over.
Over. Oh, no. I am totally in support of moving forward on this. And I think that we have devoted many, many years of planning and studies and momentum and money. And if we were to delay this again, the cost is only going to go up. Those people that we're talking about that might struggle to pay for this, they're going to struggle even more. And if we have a new chief coming on, is he going to have time to take care of doing this, facilitating and going forward? And he's got a lot to learn unless he's already here and you magically can talk to him. No, I think this is, we should not delay this in any form. We have a great location. We have a great design. We have momentum. We should have followed that momentum early on. COVID didn't help us with anything, but move on with this and, and get it done. The longer we wait, that one minute, that one minute, that one minute. Got to be there.
Also, the important part is I wanted you to have this information so that you don't have to make a vote the night of because this is very, very important. And so that's the intent of, of the special meeting. It's intent. I'm available if you have questions because you will. Please reach out. I will do my best to answer those. And then this will get published on an agenda down the road. I would guess probably in April to where you'll actually take action and move forward. But I want you to be able to process it because it is, it's a lot. Bring your questions to me. I, I will tell you that I, sometimes I make decisions in the fire department to please all the staff. And there are going to be some decisions that operational, we're going to have to make some changes. Council President, you, you bring up big things about, you know, the HIPAA deals like, you know, I will tell you, I don't want another tour. you know, I will tell you, I don't want another tour in this building, because we bring kids there. It's not the right place to do it, and we have to stop doing that, and that's something that is a direction that I'll probably have put forward, and limit our exposures and limit the element, because we we even still, now we're all the way into December of '24 or January of '25 at the earliest, even if we move forward, and I think there's some things, you know, I've, I I will tell you, I listen to the public that says something that, hey, chief, why are the fire engines going to the grocery store, and that's out of your, you're talking about response times, and yes, sometimes, depending where they're at, they might be close to the call, but they might not be as close to the call. We as a department have to make that tough decision, is maybe it's, we put our foot down and say, you come with all your food, and you don't leave the station unless it's call or training. But so we've gotta look at those, and and those are the hard elements. I'm having a hard discussion with the fire marshal related to the bedroom right now, because we've said, well, it's gonna come again, and the station's gonna get built, and I mean, I've, like I said, I've been through this process, and we have to say, can we just keep thinking what if and and take those actions? So those are things that are not gonna be easy decisions that I will sit with my team and will have to make, because I want to set the next fire chief up for that success of not having to make those decisions either, because we're gonna know those things, and and so I I listen to everything you have said, I appreciate it. This has been one of the hardest projects, I've learned a lot through this, a lot of do's and don'ts. There's no textbook out there for a fire chief to say how to build a fire station or or what to do, and the various ways, what we do look at is, why are we looking to build a fire station or replace it? And, you know, number one should always be to improve our response times, because that's why we have a fire department. If response times don't matter, then we shouldn't, we didn't need to have a paid department with the number of stations we have, and so those are some things that, you know, we continue to look at. But I am here, I'm available for you, happy to answer questions, and I want you to process this, and that's why the whole intent of this is get this as far in front so that you can think about it, because it is not easy, and then, once again, I'm not here to tell you, this, I'm, I'm happy I'm not in your shoes, I will just tell you that, because it's not easy.
Chief, I do have one last question. And this'll probably make me a bunch of friends. I, and I, I came to the question because I saw a post from, or maybe an ad, I can't remember what it was, but the fire union voicing support for the LHS levy. So I actually did a Google search, a Tribune search, to see if the fire union has ever given an official position on Station Number Four. Maybe you can't answer that, because I know that technically you're not a part of the union, but maybe there's a union member here, or if they've, if if I'm missing historically that they voiced an opinion officially.
They have not, and I was told that that conversation come up at their last union meeting, should they hold a vote, there was no decision made, but there has never been a statement from the firefighters' union.
And, and, okay.
Chief, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
For all your years.
Counselor Cleberg.
We're moving on to item, active item?
No, we're not, not yet.
So in consideration of the fact that we haven't received the Phase 1B change order yet, I would make a motion to remove that from tonight's agenda.
Second.
Who's the second?
Hey, it's been moved by Counselor Cleberg, second by Counselor Schroeder, to remove Phase 1B change order from the active agenda.
Discussion? Counselor, you might just explain your motion, some folks may not have heard that.
The motion was, we did not receive the Phase 1B change order, where we could even take action on it. So we're anticipating receiving that, and it'll happen at a further, later meeting.
That's the issue. Any questions, counsel? Nope. Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Counselors, next we move on to item five, unfinished and new business, city councilor comments. Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to shout out to the, I just heard on the news that the LCSE Women's Basketball is moving on to the second round of their NAI championships, so wishing them good luck.
City boards and liaison updates. Your comments? I guess I would, for my comments, I'd like to recognize Mr. Gary Peters from the Airport Authority, thank you for being here today, Gary, I know how important this issue is to you, and I can assure you that we're going to take the necessary time to discuss this and work with the airport and others in our community to make the best decision we can, so thank you for being here and for all the others. Advisory boards, commission appointments? Okay, agenda topics coming up, your counselors. Or Cleberg?
I've got two minutes to make it into the MPO meeting, well, two minutes late for the MPO meeting, so is that.
That's your agenda topic?
I will, I will report on our liaison position.
Okay, thank you.
At the next meeting.
Thank you.
Hopefully I'll learn something.
Counselors, anything else? No? Okay, I entertain a motion. What's the motion, please? Motion for the record, it has to be stated.
My move that we adjourned. Second.
Removed by Counselor Schroeder, taken by Counselor Leibert, turn, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
She said aye.
Rose, the motion carries, we are turned, thank you.